Currently live with Alzheimer's and related dementia. There are another seven thousand six hundred. For caring for loved ones with Alzheimer's. Whereas in twenty twenty, COVID nineteen contributed to a seventeen percent increase in Alzheimer's and dementia death. Whereas fewer than one in five Americans are familiar with mild cognitive impairment, MCI, which can be an early stage of Alzheimer's. Ninety percent of physicians say it is important to diagnose MCI due to Alzheimer's. But over half say that they're not fully, they are not fully comfortable making that diagnosis. Whereas June, Dear June, the Alzheimer's Association invites Humboldt County residents to participate in the longest day on June twenty first, held annually on summer solstice. The longest day invites participants to fight the darkness of Alzheimer's through a fundraising activity of their choice or by wearing purple. Therefore, we, the City Council of Real Del, California, do hereby proclaim June Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. The council thanks the Alzheimer's Association for providing services to people and families coping with dementia. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm John Schmidt and my wife Carrie and we volunteer with the Alzheimer's Association. And if I could just read the short statement. The Alzheimer's Association would like to thank the council for proclaiming June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. We would like to encourage the council to wear purple during one of your June meetings to help raise awareness of Alzheimer's honor though and honor those affected by the disease. We also want to thank you for your past support by hosting a promise garden. We sent our little hay bales and flowers up there on the corner. We appreciate you letting us do that. And that thereby helps to raise community awareness of our walk-in Alzheimer's, which takes place in October of each year. It'll be October eighth this year and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on its agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph Co. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that the item came on after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Are there any emails or?
We didn't see what coming. In your newsletter, letter for last couple of months, you printed about vehicles parking on the roadway in the opposite direction to which the traffic normally moves. Apparently it's okay for some, but not for all. We say you need to remind the police of the code section two two five zero two. There's a blue house on the north side of Beener Street across from Trader Car that has a blue pickup, a white SUV, a white car, and sometimes a sheriff's SUV plus some of their company at times. We guess it's okay because of who they are. Not so. We would be watching to see, we will be watching to see if this matter is taken care of. Plus we will keep an eye on it out for the rest of the city. The police drive down Beener Street all the time, so we know they see it. You need to take care of this matter. We will be watching sign citizens of Beener Street.
Thank you. And are there any handbrakes? Move to the consent calendar. Are there any items the council member cares to pull from the consent calendar? Does one of the audience care to remove anything from the consent calendar? They know, done handwriting emails? Hearing and seeing nothing, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So move.
You have a motion and there's second, no second. You have a motion and a second, we vote. Motion carries four zero. Just before, because I don't want to run out of time. So to say, anyone who's watching, please go vote. That's what we can do as a. Okay, now, I'll move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Garans and members of the council.
Next page thirty eight, I'm sorry.
And that is on thirty eight. The next meeting will have an update from city engineer GHD. We will also have a presentation from Caltrans over the bridge replacement, the Northbound Bridge, otherwise known as the Muffet Bridge. And that presentation from Caltrans, but they're also looking for input on ways to improve the project aesthetically. So we don't have any detailed plans or anything like that at this point in time. But as soon as we get them, the presentation, we will forward them on individually with council members. And that'll hopefully provide enough time for the council to ponder different ideas and concepts for the location. I don't know whether they'll be able to follow through on those, but they did invite them. And then in other infrastructure related news, if you haven't been down to Riverside recently, we encourage you to drive on down. That way there's been quite a bit of pavement work underway. Past couple of weeks have been filled with preparation work for that particular project. And they are working on the, on the triangle and I believe hopefully finishing up for A and B tomorrow, today. And then they'll be on to the hill here to do some work on Orchard and Cherry. With that, I will go ahead and return to the council, see if there's any questions or comments from, to staff. And welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Lieutenant Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garans. I jogged down Riverside last Friday and rode my bike on it on Sunday. And nice job. It's a tremendous improvement.
Councilmember Carter, I've also gotten compliments on Riverside right. Thank you. Councilmember Wilson? Thank you. I have no questions. Thank you. Looks great. I'm excited. About just the roads getting better in general and just, I'm just really excited about it. It's really nice to feel like we're accomplishing something. Now, we have a slight adjustment. I'm sorry. Does anyone else have a question from the staff on the staff report? Are there any hand raised or emails? Then move on. We have an adjustments to the agenda. We are going to move the budget to the item number one and climate action plan to item number two. So the budget.
Yeah, fifty eight in our package. Yeah. So we presented the recommended budget to the council on May seventeenth. At that time, there were no recommended changes by the council. The, the staff has made three changes since that time to the budget. One of them is to add the purchase of a replacement public works truck. That was, and I think we actually put this in twenty twenty one and didn't get it. And then in twenty one, twenty two, and weren't able to get it. Now we're going to put it in twenty two, twenty three. It's been challenging to get this truck. So it's really not any additional funds being spent. It's just rebudgeting already, an already approved purchase. And then we did add ten thousand dollars to the police budget for traffic study based on comments from the priority session. And then there was a three thousand five hundred and sixty dollar adjustment having to do with expense transfers that was inadvertently left off of the original budget. And so now the proposed budget totals eight million nine hundred and fifty three thousand nine hundred and four dollars. And this is the slide basically showing by activity, how the budget is allocated with capital grant projects being the largest one. As I discussed at the last meeting, the budget has gone up fifty six percent. And that is primarily due to the fact that we have a large number of grants that are included in the recommended budget. Police is the next largest expenditure and then city capital projects. And then we have sewer water debt and all of the remaining departments. And then here is how the revenue is allocated. There's been no changes to the revenue estimates since the recommended budget was presented on the seventeenth. Grants make up the largest portion of revenue and they are equal to the expenditures. All of the grants that we had were one hundred percent, no match. And then the general fund comes in at one, about thirty percent. And then we have sewer and water, then that remaining smaller ones. And then the general fund expenses, about fifty percent of the budget is police, forty. I'm just gonna say about fifty, because I can't actually quite read that. Even with my glasses on, I must be. And then capital projects make up a little bit over twenty five percent. And then the city manager department, not the city manager. And finance department comes in after that. And then we go to the next one. And this slide shows general fund revenue, major revenue sources for, since two thousand sixteen, seventeen, with the blue being in blue BLF, the red being retail sales tax, which includes both Bradley Burns and Measure J U. And then the property tax is purple and then the cannabis is green. And you can see the kind of had the cannabis has gone up and gone down. And there's a very slight reduction estimated for revenues for twenty two, twenty three from twenty one, twenty two. And then this is the capital project and basically this slide similar to the one that we had last time, except that it now has the additional truck on it. And the last one that just says, if there's any questions. And oh, and the, the recommendation is that the council approve resolution fifteen thirty nine dash twenty twenty, adopting the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three operating and capital budget and position allocation table, which is included in the resolution. Or provide additional direction and instruct staff to return on June twenty first, the adoption of the budget.
Run back here. Okay. Councilmember Wilson?
That looks good.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Also no questions. Once again, as always, thank you Cheryl. Everything else great. And Mayor Lieutenant Johnson.
Well done, finance department.
All around well done, finance department. And we thank you for everything you've done. Is there a motion to approve resolution? Are there any questions? Any hand raised and emails? Questions? So is there a motion to approve resolution fifteen thirty nine and twenty twenty two, adopting fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three, operating and capital budget and position allocation table?
So move.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second? Second. You have a motion and a second? Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl.
I'm going to excuse my.
Absolutely. Good luck.
Thank you for speeding it forward.
Good luck.
Now we will move on to the climate action plan, page forty four of our packets.
Mayor Garans, members of the council. This is an update on the regional climate action plan. As council's aware, staff, the city has been working with the other six incorporated cities in the county, along with county Humboldt, and preparing a regional climate action plan since twenty, late twenty eighteen. We're at the point now where we're going to use the public draft climate action plan. And the next step in the process is actually to begin the EIR process. The board had a presentation today from Michael Richardson, who's going to be providing that presentation to us as well, where we're at. And with that, if Michael is available and ready, we can move right on, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Are you there?
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm attending by phone. Is, is there a way that I can attend using my computer or should I just go for it using my phone?
It's up to you. There is, the PowerPoint is loaded and up.
Okay, well, yeah, if, if somebody could just help me advance the slides, I, I can just do it by phone then.
You got it. Just call it out.
Okay. So yeah, as Kevin mentioned, we are pivoting from developing the climate action plan to evaluating the environmental impacts of it. And frankly, it's, it's not a perfect document and we are. What we're trying to do is to, through the EIR process, tune it up to fit everybody's needs. And, and so what we're asking jurisdictions to do is to give us permission to do that essentially to, to take the, the document that's been drafted and consider that the, the project that will be evaluated in the environmental impact report and to accommodate changes to it through the alternatives analysis in the environmental impact report. So if you could go to the second slide, that would be great. The purpose, so the purpose of this agenda item is simply to determine whether member, whether member jurisdictions are comfortable in beginning the environmental review process. And the next slide. And some of this you've, you've already seen. I presented to your city council in, in January and some of these slides are pulled from that same presentation. So I'll be quick through them. The goal here is to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to meet state, the state targets. The next slide, please. This, this slide shows the climate action planning steps. And we're in step number three where we've, we've developed an inventory in step one. We've reached out and communicated to some degree. And then step three is to set the goals and to select actions. And, and this is really going to be kind of an iterative process where we've, we've identified in this draft cap, a set of measures that will get us to the state targets. And, and we've pulled from other climate action plans developed by other jurisdictions throughout the state. And then we've also pulled from our regional plans, like the transportation plan and the Redwood Coast Energy Authority's plans. And we've developed the measures that seem like a, a pretty good fit for Humboldt County writ large. And, and now we're going to be evaluating those in the environmental impact report. And then eventually your city council and all of the city councils will be setting the goals by actually adopting the climate action plan. And so that'll complete step three. And then step four is obtaining resources. Some of this, some of these measures are going to require funding and other sources of, of, of resources. And, and so that's what we're going to be doing as soon as we adopt the plan. And then we will be taking action and tracking and reporting and then doing another iteration of this where we'll do another inventory and see how we did. And the goal here again is to meet the state targets. And that's in this next slide. If you could advance that, please. You've seen this slide before. We, we, we hit the twenty twenty targets. And so now we're moving on to hitting the twenty thirty targets. And with the measures that we've got in this draft climate action plan, we get there. We're, we're just barely over the finish line. But, but really that's by design. We don't want to design it so that we're trying to be overachievers. We're, we're just trying to hit the minimum mark here, meet the state target, which is forty percent of our GHG emissions, greenhouse gas emissions below what we were emitting back in nineteen ninety. So that's a statewide target. We've incorporated that into our climate action plan as the goal, the immediate goal. But we, we also. But we also are aware and we are kind of setting ourselves up for a much more aggressive goal in twenty forty-five to hit net zero. And this is another one of these state targets and it's going to be a heavy lift. We're going to need all hands on deck kind of an approach to get there. And so this climate action plan sets us up to do that. Next slide please. So we've got the recommended target I mentioned earlier, forty percent below nineteen ninety levels by twenty thirty. Next slide please. And what this slide shows is the reductions from the highest performing measures in the draft cap. The cap is the climate action plan. You can see in the upper right-hand corner of this pie chart, the electrification of existing infrastructure is the most significant chunk of our greenhouse gas emission reductions that are in this climate action plan, this draft climate action plan. And then you can just keep going clockwise around the pie chart and you'll see zero emission passenger vehicles is another significant chunk of it. And then zero emission freight is another significant chunk. And there's a couple of others that that are identified. Next slide please. And then here is the high-level timeline. I think this was a part of the previous presentation. And so we're, we've launched the effort in twenty eighteen. We developed the inventory and we created the measures and selected a preliminary set for your consideration and the consideration by all of the jurisdictions. And then we developed that draft plan that's now in front of you. And then from here, we will draft the environmental impact report. And after that's complete, then we'll go through a public hearing process to actually adopt the climate action plan for each local jurisdiction, including Rio Del. And so that's where we fine tune the document to meet the needs of your community. And the last slide is just simply, what do you think? Are you ready to move forward? I can give you a quick update on the status of all of the other city councils. Blue Lake is meeting just in a couple of minutes, jump forward, is handling that one. And as soon as you guys are done with me, I'll jump over to that meeting. And Fortuna has, they didn't say yes or no. They asked some clarifying questions in my presentation to them. Likewise, City of Trinidad didn't say one way or another how they wanted it to go. They kind of left it up to the Board of Supervisors. And the board met today to review it and they approved our moving or they authorized us to move forward with it. They have some specific concerns that they want addressed in the climate action plan. And I can go into those in more detail or I'm sorry, the concerns they want addressed in the E I R and the refined climate action plan. And basically it's in response to the public comment that we got from the Humboldt Prosperity Alliance. They, the comments developed or submitted by Humboldt Prosperity Alliance really resonated with the board as they did with many of these other city councils. And so the board specifically asked us to address the concerns that they raised through identifying an alternative that would include point source emissions, for instance, and also address kind of develop measures that are better fit to the rural lifestyle. And so then the other cities that have reviewed it, City of Arcata, City of Eureka, both of them approved it, approved moving forward and also the City of Ferndale. And so we're just wrapping up this phase of the effort. And I'm hopeful to get your support as well. So I'll hand the mic back over to Kevin and I'm available to answer any questions, yeah.
All right, Michael, thank you for once again attending the meeting and giving an update on where we're at with the cap. If you haven't had a chance to watch the board meeting or if you did not watch this afternoon, I mean, may be interested in watching that portion of the board meeting. It was about an hour and forty-five minutes where they went over a number of points. And Michael mentioned that one was natural point sources, carbon sequestration, world living. And there was a couple more, but I did provide your council an email the other day with Humboldt Prosperity Alliance's comments. Basically, they were those comments and they will be addressed as directed by the board in the E I R and will be actually pointed out as options or alternatives. And then the final cap will either reflect them or they won't. So with that, what we're looking for tonight, do we have any objection with moving on to preparing the environmental impact report for the climate action plan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Garner. Kevin Mack, I read with great interest the presentation by Humboldt Proprietary Prosperity Alliance. And I bet they made some absolutely excellent points that we all need to consider. Starting right off with, what was the industry in Humboldt County in nineteen ninety? And it seems like we're really missing the game here. And we don't include the pulp mills that existed on Humboldt Bay. I mean, they were huge polluters. And I think you're the bar is being set arbitrarily way too high by not including them, as you rightfully should. I think you're doing a great disservice to all the people in Humboldt County by willfully taking that out of the equation. And the other points were equally well made and all of them need to be strongly considered in any E I R presentation. Thank you, Mayor Garner.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Gordon beat me to it. Thank you, Gordon, for going first. No, nothing further.
Councilmember Wilson?
I agree with Mayor to Mr. Johnson. The fact that he to remove the pulp mills from the equation in one way addresses some of the, in my opinion, when it's their addressing climate change problem. It's not being addressed. Yes, I believe a lot of this is just facial talk, you know, it's putting out something to say something to make it sound good. But as far as doing something substantial to solve the problem with both, I don't know so much about the county that I can say, state and nationwide, it's not, it's not being, it's not being solved. To push the idea of getting away from emissions from your cars and going on to batteries, what you're going to have to acquire from nations that are biggest source of the lithium battery is Afghanistan and we're not able to access that quality. And then how do we go about charging those batteries? And so that part seems to just fix one thing and create another problem, just like we talked about earlier on some issues that we have in the city that we corrected one problem and created another problem. And so I'm all for doing climate action plans and fixing problems. But substantially, our nation and world as a whole is not addressing the issue, if it's even addressable at this point in time. It may be too late. But I do appreciate Mr. Johnson's point out that to remove something as a pulp mill, as they were such a polluter, if you lived here through the sixties and seventies and eighties, in particular in the region, just smell the corny that was coming across the bay, spending away the windows on to go into rooms that were in the pulp mill that had, there was so much flooring in the air, the air was the the, it was like looking through a gas pump coming out of a car and you see the gas fumes because they were so powerful. And so the fact that that's not there anymore, Humboldt County is becoming a more pristine place. And actually you give it credit in the climate action plan. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And I do agree and I think that adding in or promising the prosperity networks report to, when you're doing the E I R is going to be very important. And I would support moving forward with the E I R, but only if that is taken into consideration and the points apply. Are there any questions from audience or are there any hand raised, any emails? So there, it technically doesn't say a vote, so do, how do you want me to handle that?
You know, I think we should actually pass for motion and I apologize for not making their recommendation. A motion to move forward with the E I R provided that the issues raised in Humboldt Prosperity Alliance's letter to the Board of Supervisors are addressed and analyzed in the E I R.
So moved, is there a second? We have a motion and a second? Motion carries four zero. Thank you for being here, Mike, we appreciate your work and all of your, everything you've done. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, thank you very much, Mayor Buck Garnes and Kevin and Kyle and the whole crew there, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Special call items, page ninety-two in our packet, public hearing cost recovery for abatement of four eighty-three, Fourth Avenue.
Evening, Mayor Garnes, members of the city council. This is a public hearing for cost recovery for the second and third abatements that have been done for your report happening. Our recommendations are that you open the public meeting, receive any testimony that's relevant to the abatements that have been done in forty-three, Fourth Avenue, close the public meeting, discuss the matter and approve the findings in order to confirm the accounts and assessments for the abatement for your report. And Community Service Officer Mary Clark is here to provide that assessment.
Thank you. You want to say anything, you want questions first?
So the first abatement that was completed at property was in September of twenty twenty. Lean is already going to place on the property for that, for the cost of that abatement. Prior to maybe hiring, additional abatement occurred on March fourth of twenty twenty-one. The cost for that abatement was seven hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-four cents. On December twenty-second, I and a crew completed the third abatement. The cost for that one was two thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. All of this information has been sent to property owner. And there has been no attempt in her making a payment thing with the city to pay those costs.
You? Councilmember Wilson?
What, a question?
You have a question?
I don't have a question. I mean, don't we need to make a comment? This is part of the
Thank you, Mayor Potent.
Thank you, Mayor Garner. I jogged by forty-three, Fourth Avenue a few days ago. And it looks like they're working on fourth abatement order right now. Don't they understand that it's going to cost them? I mean, I figured out that it costs them twenty times as much to get it abated by the city as it does to hire ecology to haul that stuff away? I know it's slow people. But this is beyond that.
I just, I want to say first, thank you to city staff who's been working on this because this has been ongoing and ongoing and ongoing. And I know it's not a fun thing to have to do. Yeah. I also want to say that it makes me sad that when we have to do these things a little bit, it just hits a bummer in general. And so I just, I want to acknowledge that and like see humans as human beings and it's, something's going on down there that I feel bad about. Lastly, long-term, what do we do? Do we just keep abating and abating and abating?
That's the ultimate question.
Yeah, like what happens? I mean, that's fine if that's what we do, I'm just curious, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, keep abating.
Yes, and we can issue administrative citations.
Yes.
However, that has to get up to a certain amount for us to actually take action on that and take that to small things or to get that enough.
They don't care about administrative citations.
No, no.
Okay.
The only other option that we may have open to us is currently the cost recovery from the first abatement is just lean on the property. While I'm not excited about kicking somebody out of their home, there is possible to attach that lead to their property taxes and they wouldn't be able to pay the property taxes until the lien was paid in six years, the property could be sold in tax auction. Like I said, I'm not real excited by kicking people out of their homes, they've got nowhere else to go. So, but that is kind of the last option.
Yeah, okay.
The usability of continuing to do abatements runs for life.
It's an ethical dilemma, right? Because there's kids there, there's always animals, well, there's sometimes there's animals there, sometimes there's not, I don't know. But yeah, I mean, that's why I say I feel sad when something like this pops up. But it's also just horrible to look at and I really feel for those neighbors down there. So thank you for, I want to know what you saw. Maybe I did some, I mean, no. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, I thank for everything guys have had to put up with and have to do and it's great, I appreciate it. It's very, very sad and seemingly unnecessary, but that's what it is, I guess, as they say, so. I, are there any questions, hand raised, emails? Then I will close the public hearing. And call for a vote on whether we want to move forward. Cost recovery of the abatement for four eighty-three, Fourth Avenue.
Mayor Garner, I would move that we accept the findings and confirm the account of assessments and assess the property owners of four eighty-three, Fourth Avenue, the full cost of the abatement.
Thank you, is there a second? A second, but say once again that I'm sat down. Thank you, and we have a motion and a second? Motion carries four zero. I will move to the second reading by Ty Lowly and Dr. Gordon, number three nine one two zero two two, amending the city zoning regulations, chapter seventeen of the Riddell Invisible Code to be consistent with the California Government Code six five six five zero, state-supported housing law, six five six six zero, low barrier navigation centers law, and six five nine one three point four, state streamlined ministerial approval process by establishing procedures for reviewing ministerial approval applications. Page ninety-nine in our packets.
Mayor Garner, members of the council, as the mayor indicated, it's just a second reading of the stat, state mandated amendments to our zone regulations to facilitate the development of certain housing types. A lot of, as presented in that true base seventeen, meaning a lot of the requirements are actually done. We meet those state mandate deadlines already. And I'm actually proud of that. So again, um if you don't have any questions. In order to move along, I would recommend that we adopt ordinance number three nine one to twenty twenty-two. Uh many to go to implement those state housing law regulations. And then directly put to the board that publish uh. The opposed adoption ordinance, the summary ordinance as required by section three six nine nine three of the California Government Code. Again, if you have any questions, I'd like to have to answer them. If not, I would open up the public hearing. Appreciate any members of the public have any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for everything you've done to get that done. That was a lot of work and so we appreciate that for sure. Um are there any questions? Councilman Carter, Councilman Wilson?
My question is, was there any comments from the financial commission on this?
Uh just when there wasn't, on another one coming up tonight, um there was some suggestions.
Any questions from the audience? Any hands raised or emails? Hearing none, speaking none, I will then call for a motion. To accept the second reading and adoption of ordinance number three nine one dash two zero two two.
So moved.
A motion and a second, second, a motion and a second, please both. Motion carries four zero. Introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number three nine four dash two zero two two and approval of resolution number one five four three dash two zero two two. Related to the extension of measure J, the one percent transaction and use tax for general purposes.
We'll take it from here, Mayor Burns.
Page one sorry, one seventeen in our packets.
Page one seventeen. Uh so uh what we'll do is uh. Introduce uh the first reading of the proposed ordinance. We'll open the public hearing, receive any public input. Uh and then what we will do is approve of the resolution. Uh and continue the item on to the next uh city council meeting. So the the council may recall that uh. Uh measure J. Uh is a full one percent of transactions and use tax. Uh that was passed by the voters twice, once when it was originally measure U and measure and then measure J. Uh the tax currently is set to expire on uh December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh the current ordinance uh before you. Uh which would need to be approved by the council uh this month and then forwarded to the board of supervisors for. Approval for placement on the ballot uh for November, uh for the November election. Uh proposes uh to reduce uh the one percent tax. Uh by twenty-five percent and make it a three-quarter of one percent uh tax. Uh with the termination date determined by uh the voters. So the uh in reviewing the the city's long-term financial projections, uh where we're at. Uh and uh given uh that the city does have some additional new revenue sources coming into it from cannabis. Uh a good portion of that that does seem to be a sustainable, a stable source of revenue. Uh that there is room to go ahead and reduce uh the measure J tax. Uh and put that forward for approval of the voters uh this coming November. Um so that is, those are basically the the major changes uh to the existing measure J ordinance. Uh the language uh in the as proposed currently. Is shall uh the city of Red Hill continue to impose a reduced uh point seven five percent transaction use tax. Uh with all the proceeds placed in the city's general fund. Uh and the tax authorized for this ordinance is expected to generate approximately three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars annually. Uh and the revenue will continue until uh continue in effect until repealed by the voters. Uh would be the the posed question. Uh so as the council knows, uh we have been able to, uh as as the council witnessed earlier and approved the budget. Um cities making very significant investments related to infrastructure. Both uh city discretionary funds and then grant funds that were able to pull down, most of those without any match requirements. Um so those uh investments are heading towards one of the council's consistent priority uh area projects, which is. Uh the uh infrastructure of the community. Uh and so infrastructure. Uh in this case primarily roads and so we do have a construction project currently underway on Riverside. Uh and we have done work on Aloa and various other streets throughout town uh to. Both reconstruct the surface, uh to do asphalt maintenance overlays and then also to do uh slurry seals. Um and uh and we are going to be continuing to do that as the council outlined, the approximately one point eight million dollar. Uh plan to uh uh to remedy uh many of the streets uh in town and we still have a couple of years to go on that uh on those outlays. Um so uh when you when you look at it, uh you know. Uh we have, you know, two different primary sources of funding that's going in to subsidize these street projects and. Some of that is cannabis and some of it is uh business T U T. And so in order to continue these. Projects going forward, uh I highly uh recommend that the council uh. Uh approve the ordinance and and forward it onto the board of supervisors for a vote of the public. Some of the other things we've been able to do over the past few years uh has been uh aside from infrastructure, it's been investment in public safety in Red Hill. Uh uh the police department has been able to invest in new technologies, uh new equipment. Uh new staffing levels, so increased staffing levels. We have a community services officer. We have a uh an additional officer position that was added uh to the budget. Uh so we're able to uh to do uh a lot more in terms of public safety. Uh obviously recruitment uh is going to be an issue uh moving forward, but the council has been very aggressive in making sure that. Uh we are paying as competitive a wage as a small town can and and a big result, a big cause of that has been. Both cannabis tax revenue and uh measure J. Uh so as I mentioned earlier, measure J is uh has a sustainable funding stream. Certainly, we have uh a ballpark here as. Uh the uh finance director outlined a couple of years ago. Uh and what we're seeing though is is a more sustainable figure. Um around the the two hundred and some odd thousand dollars uh in revenue. Uh we certainly anticipate that that will continue to grow as we have additional development projects occurring. Uh and so it seems like the appropriate time to be proposing a tax that is a lower uh than the current one. And so that will put us in line with uh with uh Fortuna. Uh I believe uh Firdale is exploring the concept of uh an additional uh train or transactions and use tax. Uh and we will be uh lower than Eureka and possibly Aricat. I don't remember what their exact number was, but um. Uh but with that, uh if there's any questions or comments, I'm happy to try to to answer them and uh. Uh and. Follow the council's pleasure.
Thank you. Um thank you very much, City Manager. Um I I do appreciate that we have been able to accomplish a lot with this um. You know, tax has been very helpful in the city, to the infrastructure, to the safety, all the things you've mentioned. And it is um. Uh very important to all of those things being able to continue with. But I do appreciate the lower, not to lowering it because we found there's something that can offset some of it. And so that then translates to lesser tax for the citizens and that's greatly appreciated. Are there any questions, Mayor Grant?
Thank you, Mayor Burns. So first off, I want to thank the citizens of Red Hill for supporting the concept of. Measure U, measure J for. Ultimately, decade now. Thank you voters and uh you know, when we passed the last one, we indicated that we wanted to stand it on. Streets. Public safety, economic development, and as the city manager has outlined, we've done exactly that. We've invested the community's. Money, what we think is wisely, we get back into the community. My other question is that uh if this proposed ballot measure passes, when would the three-four?
Uh so right now it would be designed to go into effect uh January first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Oh. I don't have a lot of comments other than like to to thank the staff for uh proposing to us and the council for accepting. Uh prudent measures to spend money on, which I think. I know for a long time people have talked about. The city in the past had promised different things, that they were going to do with the money that the city gave. Since gave the city and it didn't follow through. In this case, that's been done uh with the streets and the safety. In particular, so hopefully the the citizens will continue to support the the major and I. I think it's a it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carter?
I'm on board with this round thank yous all around. Um yeah, good idea. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, and are there any questions? Any emails? Any hands raised? Um and I just want to jump on that thanking citizen bandwagon. I think we all do. I think we are very appreciative of citizens of Red Hill. Being supportive of this and hope they appreciate that we are trying our best to return it to them in ways that make our community better. Is there a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance number nine three nine four? Dash two zero two two and approval of resolution number fifteen forty-three dash two zero two two related to the extension of measure J and block six. Transaction tax.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Can I, before you vote, can I um recommend an amendment to the to the motion? Um which is uh. Um that uh that second section of the motion to just continue uh the item to uh June uh June twenty-first.
Okay. And.
Uh no, no approval of the resolution on the.
Okay. I got you. Introduce to the introduction of first reading of ordinance number three nine four dash two zero two two. And to move forward to the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting. For the approval of resolution fifteen forty-three dash two zero two two. Is that?
So moved.
Okay, we are set. That motion carries four zero. On item three, adopt resolution number one five four zero dash two zero two two. Vacating the Caltrans Give Back Parcel located south of Painter Street, east of Ireland Avenue, north of Center Street. And west of Highway one oh one. Page one twenty-six in our packets.
Oh, Mayor Burns, members of council. And it was recorded in our last meeting of May seventeenth. Um there's a process where we actually have to provide set of public hearing. We did it at the May seventeenth city council meeting. Posted on site of public notice and also notified everybody in three hundred feet of the. Property of the city's intent to vacate that or for that Caltrans to give that right away. Um for the development of the dog park, which is another one hundred percent grant funded project. Um so at this meeting, we recommend you adopt resolution fifteen forty-seven, twenty-two. On vacating that and then once this resolution is approved, adopted and signed. We would send the resolution to the county recorder. The county recorder would report it. Once it's recorded, that is vacated technically legally. And then we need to notify uh proponents, actually, the folks that are administering uh the thing in California. Is it the California grants you have?
Yeah, they don't know that is a.
It's a property.
Works, uh yeah.
Property. And let them know that they've actually vacated it and that we can move forward um in developing that dog park. Um so if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Um we are basically following protocol established in streets and highways, so. Um I did not get any phone calls from anybody. I did receive a late notice from P G and E. Um yesterday, actually, um that there was a power pole in the southwest corner. Um of the property and they want to reserve an easement um to that power pole. And you should have had on your desk a supplemental item, um which includes the line that they recommended. And then amended resolution incorporating that line, which. And then again, uh I have to answer any questions to you for the community man.
And so um. With the amended resolution. Here?
Yes. This is attached to that supplemental.
After the.
Yeah, it's the uh I guess it's the third page. First page is the cover letter, the second page is the letter from P G and E.
Okay, now therefore the results.
And then the amended resolution. Yeah.
Are there any questions, Councilman Carter?
Um I'm really excited about this. This is wonderful. With P G and E having a poll and they have an easement, is that what this says?
Yeah, they have a right basically to replace, repair, maintain the power pole.
Does it mean the city can't maintain? Like I sometimes when it's not city property, it's Caltrans or it's P G and E, we can't.
It is city property, they would have a right to repair and maintain.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, that's that. Um the other report says that you received two phone calls as a result of the notice.
I did, actually.
I'm just curious. I love this idea. I'm going to say yay yay.
Yeah, I'm just curious. See two phone calls, actually. Um both of them from neighbors as a result. One, one is actually walking by, walking their dog. Um how ironic to walk in the dog, no future dog park. And then the other one's uh uh an neighbor that got the the notice, uh direct mail notice. And uh both of them just wanted to show support.
Yes.
For the proposed dog park and glad to see the city's actually following through with what we've talked about for years.
Yay, positive phone calls. Yeah, okay. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
No, I think you, somebody else has their comment on. It's included the uh the this part three wrote into the resolution, so P G and E's covered.
Yes.
And that's fine.
Thank you. Mayor Grant?
No comment.
And I have none. I'm just yay, excited about it. And I'm getting a puppy on the twelve, so I'm super excited about it. So, okay, are there any hand raised? Any questions? Any emails? Okay, so um is there a motion to adopt resolution number fifteen forty dash twenty twenty-two vacating the Caltrans Give Back Parcel? Reserving pursuant to provisions of section eight three four zero of the Streets and Highway Code for the benefit of P G and E. And company for a permanent easement and right at any time. And from time to time to excavate for construction, reconstruct, replace. Or any initial or other side, maintain, remove, inspect and use public facilities. Including but not limited to electric, gas and communication facilities, including express and ingress and egress from the public utilities facility. And also the right to trim and cut down trees and other vegetation that might be a hazard to the public utilities, facilities. In the areas that we have open and free of building structures, wells or other structures. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second, we have a motion and a second. Motion carries four zero.
But if I mention the mayor, um that is typical public language, P G and E, that applies to all the reasons.
Thank you. Finally, we have the introduction and first reading by title all late. Of ordinance number three nine three dash two zero two two and approval of resolution number fifteen forty-two dash two zero two two. Amending the land use, I think that's going to end up being moving forward, move forward with the resolution number. Fifteen forty-two, twenty twenty-two amending the land use and housing element and the city zoning regulations, chapter seventeen. and the city zoning regulations, chapter seventeen of the Riedel municipal code. Considered to our package.
Mayor Garnett, Council. It does start on page one thirty-two of your packet. Probably easiest way to, if the council's looking at this, is starts on page one thirty-nine, which is a copy of draft ordinance. It basically includes amendment of your definitely code. Or break the definitions. Of support housing, emergency shelters, and awareness navigation centers. We currently do not have those definitions within the municipal code. And then if we look at page one forty-two, that's where we begin to amend certain land use designation. Other residential multi-family zones, subsection E, awareness navigation centers are now identified as a permitted use. And then we go to the town center zone and we talk about emergency shelters, supportive of municipal housing projects, and low area navigation centers on the upper floors of multi-story buildings. And that would be the same for neighborhood commercial sale and the community commercial zone. So those are the zoning tax amendments that are informed by ordinance number three, ninety-three, twenty twenty-two. And this would be the introduction, first reading of those items. And the second element of the project is the tax amendments to the housing element and to the land use element. And those are actually approved by resolutions. And those resolutions will require, I'm reading, one approval from your official channel square. And so those start on page one forty-six of your packet. And right there is the land use designations for the. The residential multi-family zone. Again, we're including low area navigation centers. And then we go to the town center zone where we include the difference of shelters for thousands, transitional housing projects, and low area navigation centers. We're also identifying the density. Right now, for some reason, the current general plan did not identify residential density for these zones. As council is aware, mixed uses are allowed, residential units on the upper floor, commercial buildings. And we're recommending an empty of twenty units per acre. And that would be the same for the neighborhood center and for the community commercial designations as well. Page one forty-seven. And I do want to comment that we actually got the, you were commenting Caltrans are supportive of our changes, identifying these densities. As the council is aware, there's a big movement in the planning world to be supportive of mixed housing projects and at higher densities than normal, typically see maybe fifteen units per acre. It doesn't mean that somebody is going to come in and build twenty units per acre, but they could if they wanted to. Land use designation. It also helps in what's called vehicle mileage travel, so no sequoia analysis if you have to do for projects that are subject to sequoia. And it helps people to basically live and work in close proximity from another. As far as the amendments to the housing element itself, it starts on page one forty-eight, table twenty-seven, identifies residential densities. And what we did is we clarified the rural designation. It said less than one. We actually did a specific point two zero, which is one unit plus an ADU per five acres, net rural designation. Then you see down at the bottom where we cleaned up the town center and community commercial and air center designations to allow up to twenty units per acre, which we believe accommodate lower and moderate incomes households. And then on page one forty-nine of your packet, which is table twenty-nine of the housing element, is our take it residential site inventory. We included the top property. Expecting some residential development on there. For some reason, we did not include that originally. Ten acres, we hope that there's a possibility of developing up to fifty-five. You know, it's a fair though, or that went that out there. And then on seven point eight acres, you're looking, hopefully made forty units one day for modern type housing. The one recommendation that the, and there were a couple acts too. If we look at the bottom, there are two parcels up on Breakwood Bikes that were recently brought to our attention. I didn't realize that there were some parcels up there, undeveloped parcels, until we actually got a call from a neighbor. Because there was some probably brush clearing activity that was occurring up there. And then when we pulled the accessory parcel map out, I realized there were two parcels there and they were not included in our list of available sites for ultimate more residential development. So we included those as items number nineteen and twenty. And the planning commission did suggest, if you look at items, one and two, actually even four, three, four, and five, the housing element, table twenty-nine, did not include the address or street. So the planning commission wanted to know where those were and suggested that we actually include that street where they're located. So geographically, members of the community, members of the council, and the commission can get an idea on where those sites were actually located. With that, I would ask the council to continue the second reading to the meeting of June twenty first. We're put it up with the tax amendments to the municipal code and then approve resolution fifteen forty-two, dash twenty-two, making those amendments to the housing element and the land use element as described. Again, if you have any questions, I'd more than have to answer them.
Thank you. Mayor Tim?
No questions.
Councilmember Wilson?
Is the spot on the law, is that the big vacant water?
Yes, the doggy parcel.
So that's included in the housing element that it is.
That we hope for some.
Because you're moving these things into the, this neighborhood commercial.
Yeah, and they're allowed to have again apartments on the second floor. Yes. It would still have to be commercial on the first floor.
That's, thank you. That's all my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
I have no questions. Thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you. For all of this, and I do appreciate the street names being in there. That was a good suggestion. Could be a little bit better visual. Are there any hand raised, emails, questions? Hearing none. I will ask for a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance number three, nine, three, dash two, zero, two, two, and move forward to June, for the, June twenty first, for the second reading. And a motion for the approval, same motion, approval of resolution number one, five, four, two, dash two, zero, two, two, amending the land use and the housing element and the city's zoning regulations. Have a motion. Is there a second? So you have a motion in the second? Motion carries four, zero. Now we move to council reports and communications. Mayor Tim?
I have no support.
Councilmember Carter?
I'm still out. Yeah. What? Let's see. I went to the chamber meeting this past Friday. Good stuff happened in there. I don't know if anybody's seen it. Chamber briefly done here pressure washing. Rebuilding on the sites. They're moving forward with a mural project. We should brighten up that part of town and that part of town would have this. I'm excited about that. And then we're working on putting in the kiosks that we talked about, those so many days ago. But those are going to get installed. And then I just also wanted to comment on how nice the flags look for Memorial Day. And people were out there at five in the morning putting those things up. And thank you for helping with the, the holes that the holes go into. It was up. It looked really nice. And if you go on the city's Instagram page, I got a real nice video of traffic down the street of all the flags up. So anyway, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I, I think I mentioned last, last time I've gone to the RCA meeting. I don't think I was, there's one time on, or HCMA thirty, but. The RCA thing had this, I think I mentioned before, I'm not a mention there. They're trying to change the net metering law. Criteria for that, for having sold families on the roof of how you did.
Yeah.
Reversing, you put money back into the grid. They're trying to. The state is trying to take, that seemingly take, take away from residents. Gone to that trouble because they're, the theory is that the lower income people are subsidizing higher income people to afford that sold cat. So. Count about these things. So. Stay tuned to that when you get the chance to hear that goes forward. The other, the other thing I have was a question for the city manager. Should have asked probably him. For the sculpture that we had down there, the last time we mentioned the owl, that's sold, but the tree's still there. Is that going to remain here, the tree, or what is, what is? We're stuck on a tree that depends on a lot.
There's an eagle.
I thought there was an eagle.
Something like.
Last time I looked, there was an eagle. Hurts where the owl.
Yes.
Okay. Like.
But yeah, I'll have to get the, the end date on the contract. But once that expires, it becomes city property. So the, the trunk and the eagle.
Do all of the, all the sculptures after a certain date become city property?
Yes, I believe the time period was five years. And I'd have to look at the documentation again to figure out, but it's probably coming up for that particular one. It's probably coming up. I don't know. Kevin has any?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I think it's got to get close.
Yeah.
I think it's probably from this next year. I can start looking at that, get the information of the city manager, get back to council.
What's that?
I can get that information to the city manager and he can provide that information to your council.
That's all.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report. I want to thank staff. There was a lot of stuff on this agenda. And that was a lot of staff work that was involved in all of those papers. And thank you all for everything you've done. Well done. And I also want to thank the chamber for the, the display was beautiful. It was lovely. Someone asked me if they could stay up longer, but I appreciate everyone's energy on that. It was, it was beautiful. It made us look really good, right up there with Ferndale.
I thought the same.
We're getting there. So anyway, ten minutes, if you haven't voted and you're listening, run to the bowl. You have ten minutes. Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned and their motion is for every meeting. We have a motion. We have a second. Meeting adjourned until June twenty first.